Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense and more. Now, here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey.
All right, folks, hey, welcome, FM 96.1 AM 1170, The Answer. I'm Dave Stahl. We got Michael Schwartz in the house. Lance, eh, he's out messing around. But that's okay. This segment is brought to you by Gun Range San Diego. Oh, my gosh, you need to go down. If you haven't been to a gun range in a long time, you will love Gun Range San Diego. I call it the Nordstroms of gun ranges, just not the price. 7853 Balboa Avenue in lovely San Diego. They're open seven days a week, 10 to 10. So go to Gun Range, The Gun Range San Diego, TheGunRangeSanDiego.com. Get all the information on everything that you could possibly handle. And you will be totally 100% satisfied. So Mikey, it's just you and I.
It's just two of us. Awesome shop, by the way, The Gun Range San Diego. They always take really, really good care of me. So I'm happy about it.
Oh, yeah, they're really good. Uh, we do have a caller on the line?
Yep, we're gonna pick him up in just a minute.
Okay, good.
Um, we're gonna do another segment of Stump My Nephew.
Ah, what would that, what could that be?
Well, it's gonna be a lot of fun. It's gonna be, uh, well, we'll get to it. We'll get to it.
Sure, sure, sure.
First, I wanted to talk about, uh, I don't know if you saw, but, uh, we had, San Diego County Gun Owners had a really cool, uh, meet and greet last week with a guy named Larry Vickers. Did you see that?
No, I missed it. I missed it.
Really interesting. Um, you know, one of the things that we try to do, San Diego County Gun Owners, is we, we like to bring together the Second Amendment community in San Diego, make sure everybody, you know, knows everybody and, uh, we're not all on our own little island. And we found out that Larry Vickers was gonna be in town. For those of you that don't know, he's, uh, the founder and of, uh, Vickers Tactical, which, uh, one of their more famous products that they make are, uh, sights, you know, for pistols.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But his background is fascinating. He was, uh, a Green Beret. Uh, he was on the, uh, Delta operator for, for the, uh, US Army and, uh, was just a, and, um, and had an amazing career. Um, and, uh, after he got, uh, he was already a gun guy, you know, he was already a gun nut. He was really into firearms and he was, uh, had a, uh, really great career as in the Special Forces for the Army, uh, got out and then started training and has since become a, a, huge industry, industry leader. And we had him out. He gave a talk. He signed books. He, you know, posed for pictures. It was really, really great.
Wow.
Yeah, the guy was so down to earth, such a good dude. Um, I just wanted to, uh, thank everybody that came. Uh, we had a hundred or so people come. It was a gunfighter tactical and totally free. Um, and it was just a good way for everybody to get together and listen to an expert and, you know, tell some, uh, some stories and give some opinions. And, uh, he just did a really great job. It was really interesting.
So he's online right now?
No, online right now. I just wanted to talk a little bit about this. One of the things that San Diego County Gun Owners does, one of the things that we wanna do even more of, but I just wanted to get the word out there that, uh, hey, you know, we're, you know, San Diego, California, and we had Larry Vickers come to town, teach a class, do a meet and greet.
That's awesome.
You know, it was really great. On the line is, uh, this, this new segment. Uh, I found out that my 19-year-old nephew is a-
Oh, he's a wizard.
Yeah. He's, he knows more about guns than anybody should, especially at the age of 19. Uh, and, uh, he's just a, just a wealth of knowledge, just a total wealth of knowledge.
Yeah.
So I decided, hey, it'd be kinda fun. And he still, of course, he started getting kinda, you know,
Cocky.
Kinda cocky with me, right? Oh, he knows all it. I said, all right, okay, let's put your, your body of knowledge to the test. Let's do a new little segment here called Stump My Nephew.
Right.
And we have people, uh, writing in, uh, giving us questions. He does not know the questions beforehand. Um, so this is gonna be the first time he's heard the question. And if, uh, if you can stump my nephew, then you, uh, you get a t-shirt. We'll send you a San Diego County Gun Owners t-shirt or hat or, or, uh, glass or all three or whatever. All right, so Sam, are you there?
Good evening. How are you?
Good, Sam. How are you?
Are you ready?
Uh, I hope so.
Oh, doesn't sound so confident right now, does he?
Get him on the air and all of a sudden.
That's okay. There's only two people listening. Have no fear.
All right, Sam, so, uh, let's see. So you got, the last one you got right, and not only did you get the, the answer right, but you gave us more, uh, knowledge than we even asked for. So you did a really, really good job. So, uh, let's see if you can get this one. Okay, so, let me look here. So Jack from La Mesa writes, first off, he writes, he says, hey, thank you guys for having such a great show. I listen every Sunday. Uh, thank you, Jack from, uh, La Mesa.
Absolutely.
He said, ask your nephew to name all of the, uh, standard issue. Let's see, let me get this right here.
Write it on a piece of paper.
The standard issue main service rifles for the United States Army in order. Now, I'm gonna make it a little easier. Let's start with, uh, let's start with 1900. So let's start from 1900 to present day. Name the standard issue service rifle that the US Army uses, starting in 1900. Go.
Okay, uh, thank you, Jack from La Mesa. Um, starting with 1900, we had, uh, we still had the Craig Jorgensen in service. Um, in 1903, it was replaced by the Springfield M1903, of course. Um, it was replaced in the 30s by, um, of course, the M1 rifle, the world famous M1 rifle. I don't remember exactly which year. I wanna say 1937, 1939, somewhere in there. Um, that had a long service life. It was replaced by the M14 in 1957. Uh, seven years later, in 64 or 65, it was replaced by the M16. And, um, since then, we've been using various iterations on the M16, uh, M4 platform. Uh, as for dates on specific versions, I don't know any other than that the A1 was adopted in 1987. That's, sorry, the A2 was adopted in 1987. Other than that, sorry.
There you go. 19-year-old. Did I tell you the guy knows what he's talking about?
Well, the only problem is, who knows if he's right or not?
I'm looking at the answer right here.
Oh, you're looking at the answer. Oh.
I had to look it up too. I was like, geez, I was scratching my head. Okay, that's actually really, really, really very impressive. Uh, it's kinda, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, you got them in order, didn't hesitate at all. That's awesome.
So, so let me ask this. At 19 years old, with this type of knowledge, do you do anything in the gun industry?
Um, not in the industry.
Wow, you should be in the industry.
I see, still working his way through school. He's 19 years old, still working his way through school.
But he oughta be starting to think about, you gonna, you gonna maybe open up a gun store?
Uh, I don't know, maybe later on.
Dude, you'd be awesome at it.
I mean, he could, so name a, uh, Sam, name, uh, name, uh, two service rifles, uh, used by Israel right now.
Two service rifles used by Israel, um, the Galil, which has sort of fallen out of favor, and the, um, the Tavor.
The Galil and the Tavor. Okay, what caliber is the Galil?
Um, well, it's available in 556 and 762 NATO.
So why did it fall out of favor?
Um, well, it's based on the AK platform. They learned during the, uh, during the Six Day War that the AK was fairly reliable. Um, and it was well-liked, uh, by troops who captured them. So they, uh, they basically took the AK, um, took a lot of the features actually from the Finnish Valmet, which is also an AK variant. Um, they basically refined the AK to the point where it couldn't be refined any, anymore, uh, chambered it for 556, and that was the Galil. Um, now, because it's based on the, the Kalashnikov pattern, it tends to be fairly heavy, even with a stamped receiver. Um, and it was also kind of long. They wanted something shorter for urban combat, uh, so they adopted the Bullpup Tavor.
The Bullpup Tavor. Dave, would I tell you, the guy-
Do me a favor, send me your birth certificate. There's no way you're 19. There is no way you're 19 and you know that much. When did you start falling in love with, uh, guns?
Uh, that's a great question. I, I actually don't know.
As long as you can remember, right?
Uh, almost, yeah.
Yeah.
I just started, um, like, I got curious about something. I don't, I don't even remember what it was. And I looked it up. And then I thought, oh, huh, that gives me more questions.
It wa, it wasn't when your crazy uncle took you to the NRA museum there in Virginia?
Uh, no, I think it was a little after that.
A little after, yeah, I'll take it.
A lot of it kinda started when I read that, uh, that Chris Kyle book you gave me, um,
That would do it.
American gun.
All right. Well, buddy, thanks a lot for co, man, you know, you, we're gonna start making you a regular, cause I mean, you, I mean, I, my job has opened that whole time you were talking, but that's, you know what? That's amazing. You're amazing.
Good work, Sam. Excellent work.
Good work.
We gotta, we need harder questions now, listeners.
Harder questions.
Email in some harder questions.
Well, good thing about it is you're never gonna give a shirt away. That's for darn sure. You won't have to worry about that at all. All right, Sam, hey, thanks a lot. Take care and keep listening.
Thanks for having me. I'm wearing the shirt right now.
You are the man. Yeah, no one's gonna get that shirt. FM 96.1 in North County, AM 1170 in San Diego, we are The Answer. And yes, we will be back. We've got another great guest on the line right here on Gun Sports Radio. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio on FM 96.1 AM 1170. Hey, you gotta get your, uh, gun or pistol worked on? Trident Gunsmithing is where you need to be. Go to www dot tridentgunsmithing.com. Dan and Juan over there, they'll take care of you just like family. You into hunting? They do hunting classes. They've got special weapons just for, you know, deer hunting, duck hunting, bird hunting, mouse hunting, I don't care. They're the experts. You wanna go shoot a mouse, they'll hook you up. Plus, they can work on anything in your library. Trident Gunsmithing. Go to tridentgunsmithing.com, tridentgunsmithing.com. Well, normally, John Dillon would be on the line, but-
He's out, he's out mouse hunting.
He's actually working.
Yeah.
Which is kind of interesting. I mean, that doesn't happen all the time, but in some cases it does. And we really wanna thank John. That's, uh, go to www.cafirearmslaw.com, cafirearmslaw.com. And, uh, ask any question that you might have, and John will be more than happy to take care of you. Hey, by the way, are you frustrated by the new California laws for ARs? Looking for a cost-effective and easy solution that will allow you to keep your AR featureless and still be compliant? Well, CaliKey is easily convert your AR to be California compliant in just two minutes. Keep your entire collection intact at a price you can afford. Check out the new CaliKey and future-proof your AR from future gun laws. Go to calikey.com. That's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com. All right, Michael, who you got lined up next?
We have a great guest. You know, as you know, uh, we have a, an election here coming up in, uh, November. And San Diego County Gun Owners released our voter guide, uh, which is up on our website, saniegacountygunowners.com.
And it's an excellent guide, I might add.
Thank you. We, uh, it's about 40 people we endorsed, and I'm very proud and happy and excited to have one of our endorsed candidates. Her name's Laura Koval, and she's running for Santee City Council. Laura, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hi, Michael.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm doing great. Thanks.
Good, good, good. Now, I've, I've seen a lot of, uh, of posts, uh, from you that you were, you were walking the leather right off your shoes all over Santee. How's, how's that going?
Uh, I might've lost a toenail, but that's okay. Yeah, it's, it's, um, you know, campaigning is very busy, but, uh, I'm up for it.
And this is the first time you have ever run for office, correct?
That's correct. Um, I actually had no interest in it. Yeah, I have a full-time job. I'm the park director at Santee Lakes Recreation Preserve out in Santee.
Beautiful, beautiful facility.
Thank you. Um, I, I occasionally attend city council meetings just because of the nature of my community involvement. And I like to see what's going on in, in Santee, of course. And, uh, I found out we were going to district elections. I've lived in District Three for 26 years. There's no current incumbent on the council. And, uh, I was concerned about who the opponents were, although there was only one declared at the time. And so I thought, you know what? I gotta step up and, and run.
And this is the, and thank you for stepping up and running. I very much appreciate it. Now, the district you're running in is, this is the first election with districts, correct? Or did they have districts last night?
Correct.
Yeah, this is the first election with-
This is brand new for Santee. Mm-hmm.
And the person that, technically, you're not replacing anybody. There's no incumbent, but, but it's because Brian Jones is, uh, gonna get elected to the State Senate, correct?
Correct.
Okay, excellent.
So he's moving on, uh, and helping us up there in Sacramento. And so I, I wanna step into his position down here in Santee.
And I wanted to make sure, cause I'll tell you, when it comes to, to Second Amendment issues, those are big shoes to fill with Brian Jones. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, and, and Santee is a huge Second Amendment town. Um, so we did a lot of research in Santee, and, uh, you and I had met briefly, uh, before you declared, but I didn't, we didn't really know each other at all. But man, you came so highly recommended, and your questionnaire was awesome, and your, the way you're running your campaign, our conversation as far as Second Amendment issues, off the charts, fantastic. No question, uh, that you are philosophically a pro-Second Amendment person.
Correct, and I appreciate your support so much. And, you know, it's just been a pleasure to get to know you on a personal level.
Well, thank you.
Well, we do appreciate having you on. I don't know if you're aware, but we're the only gun show that I know of, for sure, in Southern California. I'm not sure the state of California. And we work really, 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 really hard to find what we call grassroots politicians that truly believe in the Constitution and Second Amendment rights. So it's truly our pleasure to have you on.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So you're running-
What's that, huh?
Yeah.
I said it is grassroots.
Well, once you become president, then that's a different story. But right now, you're kind of at the grassroots, and who knows where you're gonna go?
Yeah, well, Santee's enough for me. I think this is where I need to be.
I think so too. I totally understand. It's like, what did I get myself into?
So what's it like running?
Yeah, I just said that.
First-time candidate. What, how, you know, how have you been received, or has there anything come up that, that you thought, man, I didn't expect this? Or, or tell us a little bit about what it's like being a first-time candidate.
Yeah.
Oh, well, um, primarily, it's been positive. I'm overwhelmed by the support in our community. Uh, the thing that's a little odd for me is the social media politics. I'm just, you know, that's, um, that's new territory for someone like me. But, uh, you know, I try to not to pay too much attention to the noise and, and stick with the plan. I think the most fun for me, I've been doing a lot of, um, there's actually eight mobile home parks in, it's called District Three. So my district, uh, there's eight mobile home parks in District Three. And, uh, I've been having community meetings with the seniors, and that's been really, um, fun and educational for me. And I do like knocking on doors and talking to people, so, um, you know, most people are super, it's just a great community. And they're actually happy to see me when I knock on the door.
And you know, else is really cool, cause I, I help a lot of different independent shops and businesses in Santee. If I've said it once, I've said it 100 times. With all of the trailer, uh, parks in that community, go get these seniors and hire them. Cause, you know, most of them are still able to, you know, answer the phones, maybe do a little paperwork. And I think that's a great workforce, uh, right there in Santee's community.
Matter of fact, at Santee Lakes, we, you know, well, I hope she's been notified, and maybe she's not listening to the show, but we just hired a 67-year-old, um, to work in our general store. We, we love and embrace our seniors in this community.
That's very cool. So what, is there a big issue that, that's come up that, that either you expected or didn't expect, uh, that's specific to Santee?
Well, I don't think anything's a surprise about the traffic on the 50, 52. Um, but, you know, I mean-
I've noticed.
Wherever you live, there's congestion. It's, it's not unique to us, but, um, what is kind of unique is, you know, the people that live in, in Santee, 96% of them that work, uh, work outside of the region. So they're, they're stuck on that traffic. But over 200,000 people that work in East County and the inland area, um, of, of the people that, that are employed, 145,000 of those commute to either North County or downtown. So really, it's a, a regional problem, the traffic on the 52. They're coming up from the South Bay and the 125, Alpine, Lakeside, Alcoa, La Mesa. And it's all bottlenecking right there. And, um, you know, I haven't been involved with our chambers of commerce, East County Chamber of Commerce and the Santee Chamber of Commerce for years. And so I understand what's happening, and I've known about it for a long time. But, um, I also understand that Sandag just doesn't have a, a plan to do anything about it for 30 years.
That's because, that's because they're not driving up and down the 52. Because three lane, three lanes into two lanes coming from the west, and then three lanes into two coming from the south makes no sense. And the room is there. The room is there that we're, it looks like they could blow it out to three lanes going and coming. But I don't, yeah, you're right. I don't see any, any movement anytime soon.
So I am gonna be part of a new movement. Actually, I am part of a new movement. It's, uh, the mayor has the Highway 52 Coalition, and this is a group of, you know, community, just citizens. And I've, I was an early adopter, have invested my time and my money on this, and we actually hired a federal lobbyist. And we're going to help, you know, get some funding to, to do just what you said. I mean, there is room to go out and, and expand those lanes. We just need, um, federal, uh, federal dollars and to make that happen. I, it's just not gonna, you know, well, we can fight with Sandag, but I don't think something's gonna happen until we go a different route.
And federal dollars should be doing it, not, not Santee.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a Santee, you guys need to be filling potholes.
Yeah.
You know, you're right. The federal dollars is, is what handles the, uh, those freeways.
And how much does the federal government have in their coffers, just sitting there doing nothing? I think it's in the, what, billions?
Right?
Hello.
Send some of that out to East County.
There you, good.
I'm right there with you, kid. So while you're walking around, um, other than traffic, how, does the Second Amendment come up? Have you knocked on a door and said, hey, I'm running for office? And they asked, well, where do you stand on the Second Amendment, or?
You know what? It's never come up, but, um, I, I just know that this is a Second Amendment town. I just know it is. You know, you've lived here for 26 years. You know what your community feels like. And, um, and, you know, I can tell you this. Uh, when I was at one city council meeting, oh my gosh, something about, um, supporting the gun show. I believe that was one of the, the things that came up at city council. And, uh, Councilman McNellis made some comments about, you know, hi, his beliefs on the Second Amendment. And usually, usually the audience at, um, city council is pretty divided, but on that, there was, uh, unanimous applause.
Yeah, there is. Well, you know, they had, of course, Rob McNellis, founding board member for San Diego County Gun Owners, and he's a fantastic guy.
I did not know that.
Oh, yeah, Rob's the best. But, uh, the Santee City Council, uh, was instrumental in, you know, there's been a huge change in CCW policy here in San Diego over the, about the last year. Uh, and the Santee City Council was a huge part of that. They passed a resolution about a year and a half ago saying, hey, Sheriff, uh, with all due respect, we need you to change your policies. And that was, that was a huge catalyst for change.
But Laura, have you noticed, I've noticed it, cause I promote this show to anybody that wants to listen, you know, they don't volunteer that they're either a gun owner or, or pro-Second Amendment, but once you ask them, and they realize you're not trying to, you know, put them in a, in a corner, then they are happily say, oh, yeah, I'm into Second Amendment. Oh, yeah, I'm, I, I own a gun. But it's like they don't wanna tell anybody in fear of, you know, being attacked. That's kinda how I see it.
Yeah, uh, you know, in the, in today's world with social media, it's, if you have an opinion on anything, like, the sky is blue.
Yeah, you're in trouble.
You're in trouble. So, uh, you know, that, I think that has, uh, steered people clear of saying what, you know, their beliefs are and, um, keeping some of those opinions closer to the vest, but, um-
All right. Hey, Laura, we gotta go, uh-
Your website. How do people get?
What's your website? How do people get to you, help you, donate?
www.laurakoval, so L-A-U-R-A-K-O-V-A-L dot com. Really appreciate it, guys.
All right, we'll be, we'll definitely get you back on. And folks, when you're out there voting, look for Laura's name, all right?
Thank you.
By the way, hey, you or any of your family members have a taser, pepper spray, firearms, or other legal weapons? Well, what are you gonna do if you get busted? What if a cop pulls you over and takes you to jail? Who's gonna pay for the bail and the lawyer? Well, FirearmsLegal.com takes care of it for $10 a month. The whole family, $10 a month. So get peace of mind. Go to www.firearmslegal.com. That's FirearmsLegal.com. Be protected. We'll be right back. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. You are listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on FM 96.1 AM 1170. We are The Answer. Hey, if you got, uh, let's see, what have I got here? One more commercial. Hey, are you frustrated by the new California laws for ARs? Looking for a cost-effective, easy solution that will allow you to keep your AR featureless, but still be compliant? CaliKey is where you need to be. All you have to do is go to www.calikey.com. That's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com. They'll send you the unit, and I guarantee you, within two minutes, you can become compliant. So don't let your, uh, your collection go uncompliant. Get compliant. Go to www.calikey.com. All right, hey, this is the Gun Range San Diego segment located at 7853 Balboa Avenue in lovely San Diego. 10 to 10, seven days a week. You can go to www.the Gun Range San Diego.com. The Gun Range San Diego.com for all of your shooting needs, whether it's training, uh, you wanna fire a bunch of weapons because you're not familiar, familiar. Well, the Gun Range San Diego's got an awesome library that you can choose from. And they got screaming deals on Mondays. So if you're looking for a great deal, because they love first-time shooters, and they respect old-time shooters. So whether you're starting out, or you're at the other end, they'll take care of you just like their family. And right now, we've got Jason on the line. Hey, Jason, how you doing, bud?
I'm doing good, Dave. How are you?
Well, you know, just, uh, rocking and rolling. How are you? You guys busy down there?
Yeah, we're pretty busy. We're pretty busy. Got a full range. We got people on the sales side. Looking good.
Absolutely.
Looking good. And I'm really, really looking forward to, uh, I wanna mention our event, the Grand Old Time.
Yeah.
It's gonna be our second such event. It's gonna be December 7th after 5:00 PM to close. And, uh, well, what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna have a lot of people, uh, customers, employees alike, gonna be bringing in their old World War I, World War II, and Vietnam-era weapons, uh, just for everybody to kinda share, look at, kinda like a really cool show and tell. We're gonna have all sorts of stuff, uh, German Kar 98Ks, uh, uh, last time we had somebody bring a German NP40. Very interesting guns, so I'm really looking forward to that.
Well, I tell you what, when you get this show after we air it, you have to listen to the first segment. Cause I think I found somebody smarter than you.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't know about that.
And he's only 19, dude, he's only 19. All I'm saying is, when we send you the show, you just listen to the first 15 minutes.
I think I'll have to now. Yeah, I think I'll have to. I might like this guy.
Well, one of the questions that you asked was what?
He is, uh, it's, it's my nephew. It's a new segment called Stump My Nephew. And the kid's 19, and he's turned into an encyclopedia. Well, we, I, with the question that came in, we asked him to name, uh, every service rifle, you know, the main standard-issue service rifle.
Right.
Um, starting in 1900, all the way to modern day. He did it, told us what caliber it was. And then I, you know, impressed us all, and then said, okay, well, what are, what are, name a couple of service rifles from-
Israel.
Israel. And he said, oh, Galil and Tavor, and here's why the, Galil's fallen out of favor, and just went on and on and on. You gotta hear it. He's really impressive, really good. It's, it's-
Sounds like my kinda guy.
19 years old, he already knows this much about guns. It, it makes you feel warm and fuzzy inside for the future.
Yeah, it really does.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I'm making a point to tell you, make sure you listen, listen to the first, cause I know you're extremely knowledgeable on guns. In fact, this could be your kid. You just don't know about it, that's all. That's what I'm thinking.
I don't know about that, you know, right now.
Hey, so tell us about your anniversary party coming up.
Well, um, we're gonna be, uh, really, we're gonna be doing a Grand Old Time for now, for now.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It'll be December. It's gonna be December 7th after 5:00 and, um, shoot, sounds like, but anybody who likes or is like your nephew is gonna love this event. I mean, we're gonna have guns out there for people to shoot. We're gonna have, uh, we're gonna have an M1 Garand. We're gonna have a Finnish M39. Um, there's probably gonna be 100,000 Mosin Nagants, of course, you know, there's gonna be Mausers, Lee Enfields. Um, I'm really into the more, uh, the more unique ones, probably the kinda stuff your nephew's into, like the, the Indian Ishapur Enfield and 308 and the, the 1917 Eddie Stone, you know, US military rifle, the American Enfield, and, uh, all sorts of cool stuff like that. A lot of stuff people haven't even heard of. Um, I really find World War I and World War II weapons, uh, especially World War I weapons, fascinating because you can tell from the designs how, how different and unique they are, that every country was kind of trying to figure out their own, kinda like their own stand or their own machine. Um, from the, uh, from the Steyr 1912, uh, Steyr Han pistol, uh, from Austria, Austria-Hungaria, uh, to the, you know, of course, the, uh, the Boerschardt pistol, which is the predecessor to the Luger P08, which led to the creation of 9mm. A lot of cool stuff like that. So we're really hoping that it's gonna be, it's already looking like it's gonna be a lot bigger than the first Grand Old Time we had. Uh, and we had stuff there that people hadn't even seen or heard of.
And people are gonna get to shoot some of these weapons, right?
That's right. Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm bringing my Finnish M39. Um, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Bring Sam out. We gotta fly Sam out.
We're gonna have, we're gonna, we're even gonna, we're gonna go so far as to have, uh, we're gonna have period correct, uh, posters, you know, propaganda posters, you know, though appropriate, of course. Uh, around the store, we'll have apple pie and coffee. It's gonna be a really Grand Old Time.
Like buy war bonds, that kinda, that kinda stuff?
Yeah, that's exactly what, that's one of them. Yeah, buy war bonds. We stand to- together.
Uncle Sam needs you, right?
This is an Australian. He fights for freedom. He is your friend.
Rosie the Riveter, you know, those types of things.
Oh, yeah. Rosie the Riveter. Oh, yeah. All that stuff.
When is this? What day is this?
This is gonna be December 7th, a Friday.
Of course. Why would I, of course, December 7th.
Anything else? December 7th, which is a Friday. What time is it gonna be from when to when?
Five to close. We don't close till 10.
Does anybody need to make an appointment?
Don't be afraid, don't be afraid to show up early. Nope. You just, you just walk on in. You want to bring any guns? That's perfectly fine. Bring your guns, show and tell. We're gonna have a few tables set out. It's gonna be kind of like a mini museum. Um, anybody who's into, into the history of weapons and firearms in general, uh, really should show up. You're gonna have a lot of fun. It's gonna be really memorable.
So you're a collector? You collect a lot of this stuff?
I, I've had a lot of guns. I was a huge collector before I had kids. But I had a lot of guns.
You know what I got? I'd like to donate to you and your little car, your little collection, because you'd probably get a kick out of it. I got a 50, I got a 50 cal go no-go gauge.
BMG or?
Huh?
For, for 50 BMG or?
50 cal mounted on my M88 tank retriever. And I have been, I have been carrying that thing around since 1966. It's on my desk right now. And I needed to go to somebody that would appreciate it.
I would very much appreciate that. And if you have an extra Mark II or Mark III Toyota Supra, that'd be nice, too.
I've got an 82. I do have an 82 Supra L, but that belongs to my wife. Oh, God, yeah. She'd cry like, she'd cry like a baby if I gave you that car.
Oh.
But I will, I was getting ready to donate it to the Toyota Museum. And then I'm on the phone with him, and I turned around and she's crying. I go, excuse me, hold on a second. Why are you crying? You can't give it to my car?
I'd be crying, I'd be crying, too.
Yeah. And it's, it's Terracotta with the original interior, 300,000, never had the head off. But that's another story.
Oh, my gosh.
So December 7th, uh, are you, uh, enticing people to come in period clothing?
Um, actually, you know, we, uh, we absolutely, I have no problem with that. Last time we had someone come in in a German officer's outfit from, uh, we had an Austro-Hungarian officer, uh, a German officer from World War II. And, uh, we had an American, uh, general come in. And I took pictures of him standing with the respective rifles, you know, period correct weapons. And it was such a cool time. It's like Comic, it's like Comic Con for, for Gundam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just, I was thinking exactly the same thing. Well, there's no way I could get in my uniform. So that's not happening. I can't even get my arm down the sleeve.
I'm gonna get a, uh, I'm gonna get a, a bowler hat and, uh, come as Churchill.
You should go as Churchill. Yeah, right? Yeah. You got a cigar, stick that in your mouth. That's awesome.
Everybody can fit in that.
And if anybody has a tank, there's plenty of parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Or you could make parking.
I'm gonna call Arnold Schwarzenegger. He's got a tank lying around.
I'm sure he does. No doubt at all about that.
He does, he does.
That sounds like a really great event. I seriously just marked out the whole day.
You didn't make it last year?
Yeah. I, I didn't. I couldn't, there's, I think there was a conflict, but I marked out the whole day. I'm gonna be there. I'm just gonna, what time is it open? Cause I'm, put on the coffee.
Just because it starts at five, just because it starts at five doesn't mean that people, you know, it's gonna start right at five o'clock. People are gonna show up like two, three, four, five o'clock, you know?
Sure.
Just show up and enjoy, have some coffee and apple pie. Um, they're gonna have a great time.
Well, I've talked to, this week I must have talked to at least three or four people. So if people start coming in and asking about the radio station, you'll know it's from us.
Oh, that's great. That's fantastic.
Every time I hit him with the, every time I hit him with a, every time I hit him with a thousand rounds of brand new ammo for 200 bucks, they give me the, they give me the look like, what? What? Of course, I kind of cheat. I say, yeah, but you gotta mention you heard it on Gun Sports Radio to get the deal.
Yeah.
Hey, whatever it takes to get him.
A lot of people are taking advantage of that.
Whatever it takes to get him down there. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so Jason, you were talking about, you mentioned a Steyer earlier.
Yeah, Steyer Han M1912. It's, uh, doesn't have a magazine. It has an internal or a box magazine. Has an internal magazine. It's a pistol you have to load with a stripper clip like a, like a Mauser rifle. Very, very unique design.
I gotta tell you, Steyer is one of those manufacturers, it totally underrated, you know, just kind of a, you know, higher end. Yeah, right. It seems like they, they just don't quite have the popularity or, or respect of the general public. But oh my gosh, what a list of, of awesome, uh, firearms, uh, made by Steyer.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Uh, very, very, very old history, very high quality weapons, uh, very innovative weapons. The Steyer M95 straight pull bolt action, uh, for, you know, being, you know, for, of one of the first examples, straight pull. So there's no, you know, most bolt action rifles, like a 1903, go up, back, forward, down. This is just straight back, straight forward. You know, the Swiss K31, the Steyer M95 rifle. And this, this gave infantry the, the ability to fire much faster with the same accuracy than someone on the German side or the American side. It's a very innovative weapons as well.
And the most popular would probably be what? The Steyer AUG?
Steyer AUG. It's not period correct, but yeah, from the late seventies, early eighties, you know, the Steyer AUG, which is still made today. Again, very innovative, kind of a cool futuristic looking gun. Uh, I, I actually, I used to own one of those. I'll admit, just because it was in Die Hard.
There you go.
It's the best reason to buy a gun.
Absolutely. All right. Hey, Jason from Gun Range San Diego, folks. Go to thegunrange San Diego dot com, 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, seven days a week, 10 to 10. Good chance Jason will be there, 10 to 10, right here.
I'll be there.
FM 96.1, AM 1170. We are the answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You are listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on 96.1 FM, AM 1170 here in San Diego. And, uh, you can go to the, uh, websites, check this out on air. By the way, hey, do you or any of your family members have a taser, pepper spray, firearms or other weapons? Well, what would you do if you got arrested for whatever reason? Maybe it's not your fault. Maybe it's just a misunderstanding. But what are you gonna do? You got a lot of money to pay for lawyers and bail? You don't have to if you belong to Firearms Legal Protection. Go to WWW dot firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com. They will keep you out of trouble. Hey, are you a beginner, intermediate, or advanced pistol shooter? You want to shoot outside and have some fun? Hey, now's your chance. Where? Every first and third Saturday of the month at 7:00 AM to noon at Lemon Grove Gun Club. That's in Alpine. Don't ask me why. Hey, you can go down there and learn how to shoot for as little as $15. That's it, $15. So give, uh, give our buddy Paul Lichtenstein a call. It's 619-540-9600. And make sure you tell him you heard it right here on Gun Sports Radio. Hey, who you got coming up next, boss?
I got Mike Johnson, uh, from SD Must. Mike Johnson, uh, most, if, if you're anywhere, if you're anywhere near the, the, the shooting community in San Diego, you know who Mike Johnson is. Hardest working Second Amendment guy, uh, in, in, in the state, maybe the country, uh, especially with SD Must. What they do is they go out and they clean public lands, like, like, uh, federal public lands, that sort of thing. Make sure that they can remain open. Well, the county is now talking about shutting down shooting in some of the areas where shooting's allowed on public land. And that vote's coming up on Tuesday at 9:00 AM down at the county board. So I wanted to get Mike here to, to talk more about it. Mike, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
How you doing, man?
Pretty good. How you doing?
Good. You know, the only thing I can say about this, Mike, is they quit chasing the off-road vehicle guys. Now they're chasing you.
Yeah. Um, I mean, over the years, they've, they've closed a lot of public land for various reasons. And a lot of times it's, they've changed what those reasons are. Um, and I, you know, I, I have the BLM maps for, for all of San Diego County. And out of all the public land, when you include the state, federal, county, and everything else, there's only, uh, point 006% of it that's available for target shooting.
And when you say in BLM land is Bureau of Land Management, which is, it's public land. This is owned by the federal government.
Yeah, federally, it's, it's public land, but it's managed by the Bureau of Land Management.
Right. And this is supposed to be available. Yeah, it's our land. It's supposed to be available to, uh, you know, to, uh, you know, uh, people to, to use. And, uh, so, so talk about what are they, what, and, and so, but this is the county. This is the county of San Diego, the County Board of Supervisors, which is basically, the county board is like the city council, but for the, for the county. Uh, so they're trying to shut down shooting on the federal land. Tell them why they can do it.
Yeah, why is that?
So they've been, I know Diane Jacob, she's been trying to close that area down for a long time. And, uh, she's just, she's trying to justify it, saying that it's a fire danger year round. But if they know it's a fire danger, just like if you're fueling a house out in rural area and it was a fire danger, they make you cut the weeds. You know, they make you do fire abatement or they fine you. So I don't know why on public land, they can't spend a couple thousand dollars to do control burns or fire abatement where they know people are shooting, as opposed to spending millions of dollars to put out these giant forest fires. And if anything, there's been more fires started in the last year by, you know, power companies, government agencies, vehicles, than shooters have started in the last 20 to 30 years. It's, you know, but they, they just focus on this because they feel like this is something easy they can just get away with.
Well, here, here's a solution that will not work. Okay. Because it won't cost any money and it'll bring a positive result. We have young firemen, we have in the, in the Cal Service and the Fire Service that need training. Why not go out to the BLM, pick an area, light it off, and train these kids how to put these fires out? After a while, you won't have any, you know, all that'll be gone. And there's no reason to use that as an excuse.
They know people are shooting there. And even when it's supposed to be closed, irresponsible people are still gonna go there or people that don't pay attention to the internet or anything else. They're just gonna go out. And if anything, it's gonna push them further out where it's more dangerous.
Right.
And it'll take longer to put fires out.
And it actually gets worse, Dave. Uh, Mike, what was it? About a year ago, close to the Pink Gate area, there was a small fire, right? There, there was a small fire that, that, uh,
Yeah. And we actually offered, I was warning them that it was gonna, it was a fire danger months in advance of that fire. And I told them, I went to Cal Fire and BLM and, you know, anyone that would listen. I was like, hey, you need to do something about this area, cause it's gonna catch fire. I don't care, you know, if it's from shooters or if it's from a car.
Or lightning.
And, uh, yeah, or lightning or anything. And I told them like, hey, we're willing to go out there. We had, at the time, we had about 200 volunteers that were willing to go out there and cut all the grass down at, you know, in that shooting area at Pink Gate. And they basically ignored us.
For free, Dave. Okay. So he had,
Oh, I know.
It was volunteers. It wouldn't cost anybody. All we needed was access and they wouldn't give it to us.
Mike had 200 volunteers to, to clean out that area. He told them months in advance, hey, this is a, a fire hazard. And by the way, that area, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, um, it's close to a designated shooting area, but the area where they were shooting, we, they were technically not allowed, they were not legally allowed to be shooting.
There was actual mark, there was actual like markings up saying not to shoot past that point. So because it was a busy Saturday and because there's so many, it's, our shooting areas are already so limited, you know, you have all these people going to one area, they just start spreading further and further out beyond where they're supposed to be. And that was what was part of the problem. But that's the thing is, I, you know, I, I estimate there's tens of thousands of people that use public land to shoot in San Diego County every year. And they're funneling them down into fewer and fewer areas, which is making it more dangerous, not safer.
And, and we told Diane Jacob, I showed her the email chain and said, hey, Mike Johnson, SD Must, they, they warned the BLM that this was a problem. They were, these, these people were in areas, uh, where they were not supposed to be shooting in the first place, not legally allowed to shoot in the first place. They were close to the road. And there was still a fire. And her response was to basically say, well, we just need to stop shooting.
Altogether. Yeah. Yeah. Let's not fix the problem. Let's just throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Well, this was already a part of something she was trying to do.
Thousands of people that are out there responsibly, not causing any problems. You know, the very rare instances where fires have been started, you know, they've tried to use that as justification to close it down. And if they close this area down that they're proposing, it basically takes almost half of the available area that we have left.
Yeah, that point 00 what?
It's like 006%. So like six thousandths of a percent of all public land. Cause most of it's either state park, it's, you know, uh, federal, you know, forests. It's, um, and then all the BL, all the BLM you'll see on a map, most of it's already been restricted at some other time because they said it was too messy or it was too dangerous. So they were gonna do lead abatement, which they never do. Once, they think they're going to, but they never actually do it. So, you know, they just, once they find a reason to close it, they just close it. And then eventually they just say, oh, well, no one's using it. So we'll just keep it closed.
So clearly it's on the agenda. I mean, literally on the agenda, uh, for Tuesday. Tell people what's going on on Tuesday and what we need to do.
So on Tuesday, um, they're having their, you know, the meeting about it and it's on the agenda. And it's, I guess the meeting starts at nine at the County Administration Building at 1500 Pacific Highway. I think it's room 310. And they're gonna discuss it. So they should, it should be open to public discussion. So I'm hoping we can get a lot of people there to ask, to tell them like, hey, this isn't really fair or right. You know, you didn't even consult any of the shooting groups or anyone else. You know, I've been working on that land for 15 years.
Wow.
You know, that hundreds of volunteers, you know, thousands of hours, thousands of dollars, you know, a volunteer.
Almost no cooperation from the county or the feds.
Um, the BLM has actually cooperated with us. And actually, that's funny. I contacted the BLM about this supposed closure. You know, the guy that's in charge of, you know, saying whether to close areas for fire, he wasn't even consulted about this closure. Like he heard about it, but they didn't consult with him. You know, everyone, and if you call the, I guess a lot of people have been calling the BLM offices, talking about this from our posts that we've put online. And even the BLM office, they weren't even aware of it. So the county seems like they're doing this on their own, using an old memorandum of understanding of like 1990 with the, with the sheriff, saying that they have law enforcement protection rights on federal land. I don't know how that equates over to them having jurisdiction to ban something on federal land.
And again, this is Diane Jacob. Diane Jacob represents the East County and she's been through her whole career, walking around, talking about how pro Second Amendment she is. You know, that whole board, they're all Republicans, a Republican board shutting down shooting on public lands. That wouldn't fly in any other part of the country. But here we are, Diane Jacob spearheading this.
Unbelievable.
Gotta show up, gotta make phone calls, gotta make the, send the emails.
Hey, Mike, have you got a website? Case, I don't know what you're gonna do with another volunteer, but hey.
Um, it's SDmust.com or SDmust.org.
Awesome. All right, buddy.
They go to a new place.
Thank you for all that you do, Mike.
Hey, keep in touch with us, too, if any news comes up. And let the media know that, you know, you've got a, an open spot on Gun Sports Radio anytime you want to get the word out to the San Diego and LA folks.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, buddy. Keep, keep up the fight.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, folks, that was Gun Sports Radio. I hope you guys had as much fun as I did. Oh, and I also want to mention gun, uh, Trident Gunsmithing. Boy, if you need to get your gun fixed, that's where you need to go. TridentGunsmithing.com. Lance goes, Michael goes, everybody goes. And they get treated just like as if they own the joint. Family owned and operated, WWW TridentGunsmithing.com, TridentGunsmithing.com. And oh, don't forget to join San Diego County Gun Owners. $10 a month. Come on, I'll pay for the first month. Get down there. You might even get a shirt. We're gonna take a small break. We got more coming up. FM 96.1, AM 1170, the answer.